Going to give my colleagues, oh, there's one. And I just texted, uh, member, there she is. Let everyone's audio get connected and then we'll, um, go ahead and call to order. Sheri, are we, um, safe to begin?
We are, thank you.
Hey, um, good evening, everyone. It is Tuesday, May fourth, twenty twenty-one. The time is seven fourteen P M. And this is the City of Emeryville Management of Emeryville Services Authority Meeting. Um, calling it to order and I will just read some introductory remarks before we call the roll. I'd like to state for the record that this meeting is being conducted by teleconference pursuant to the Brown Act waivers provided for under the governor's executive order in response to the COVID nineteen state of emergency. During the public health emergency, City Hall is closed to the public. The agenda states that the public may view the meeting that is being livestreamed online and on E T V channel twenty-seven and provide comment by submitting an online comment form, which will be then be read into the record by staff. The comment form can be accessed by going to our main City of Emeryville website at emeryville dot O R G and clicking on Council Agendas and Videos. Once there, you will see a link entitled Submit an Online Speaker Card. The public also has the option of participating in tonight's meeting via Zoom and may provide public comment during a meeting using raise the raise your hand feature visible on your screen, or if you're calling in, press star nine. The Zoom call-in information was provided on the posted agenda as well as e-notification and on social media. At this time, I will turn back to the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Bowers.
Here.
Councilmember Medina.
Here.
Councilmember Pats.
Here.
Vice Mayor Donahue.
Here.
And Mayor Martinez.
Here.
We are all here. Uh, that moves us to item three, which is approval of the final agenda. Do I have a motion and a second?
So moved, second.
I have a motion for Member Pats, a second for Member Bowers. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Bowers.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Pats.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Donahue.
Aye.
And Mayor Martinez.
Aye, that passes unanimously. That brings us to ex parte communications. Does anyone have any communications to report? Seeing none, that brings us to the consent calendar. Uh, do any of my colleagues have any questions or concerns about what's on the consent calendar? No, then I-
I think we skipped.
We did. I apologize to everyone. We skipped item number five. Um, I will open public comment now. Now it's time for public comment. Anyone who wishes to make comments related to items not on the agenda or on the consent agenda should have submitted your online speaker card by now. Three minutes will be allowed for the city clerk to read your comments into the record. If you are participating in tonight's meeting via Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature, or if you're calling in, press star nine to be recognized. And I'll, um, check in with the attendees list. I do not see any hands raised, but I'll check with our city clerk to see if anyone has submitted any electronic communications.
Not at this time.
Thank you. I'll go ahead and close public comment and I'm now bringing it back to the consent calendar. And if there are no, um, questions or discussion, I'm happy to entertain a motion.
I move the consent calendar.
I'll second.
Uh, we have a motion from Member Donahue and a second from Member Medina. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Bowers.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Pats.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Donahue.
Aye.
And Mayor Martinez.
Aye, and there are no action items for this meeting, so that will bring us to adjournment. The time is seven nineteen P M. And, um, Sheri, tell me when you're ready for the next one.
Thank you, one moment. Okay, all set.
Okay, so it is still seven nineteen P M. And I'm calling to order the City of Emeryville Successor Agency to the Emeryville Redevelopment Agency. And please, um, uh, use my previous remarks to introduce this meeting as well in terms of how to submit an online speaker card and how to be recognized for this meeting. Um, do we need to call the roll again?
No, I think we're okay.
Very good, so we're at approval of the final agenda. So if there are no objections, I will take, um, a motion and a second.
So moved. Second emotion.
I have a motion for Member Pats, a second for Member Bowers. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Bowers.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Pats.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Donahue.
Aye.
And Mayor Martinez.
Aye, passes unanimously. Are there any ex parte communications to report for this meeting? None, moving us along. Uh, now is the time for public comment for this meeting. Anyone who wishes to make comments related to items not on the agenda or on the consent agenda should have submitted your online speaker card by now. Three minutes will be allowed for the city clerk to read your comments into the record. If you are participating in tonight's meeting via Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature, or if you're calling in, press star nine and I'll, uh, at this time, ask the city clerk if anyone has submitted electronic comment for this meeting.
No comments at this time.
Okay, and I am looking at the attendees list, um, and I don't see any raised hands. So I'll go ahead and close the public comment portion of this meeting. And that takes us to the consent calendar. And colleagues, let me know if you have any, um, questions or discussion you'd like to have about these items. If not, I'm happy to entertain a motion.
I'll move consent.
I'll second.
I have a motion from Member Medina and a second from Member Pats. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Bowers.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Pats.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Donahue.
Aye.
And Mayor Martinez.
Aye, that passes unanimously. And as we have no action items this evening, that brings us to adjournment at seven twenty-one P M. And Sheri, ready when you are to begin the regular meeting.
Okay, we're all set.
All right, it is the main event. It is seven twenty-two P M. And it is still Tuesday, May fourth, and this is the regular City Council meeting of the City of Emeryville. Um, should I make the introductory remarks again, Sheri?
Um, yes, since this is the main meeting and we, we should also call roll again.
Very good. Uh, I'd like to state for the record that this meeting is being conducted by teleconference pursuant to the Brown Act waivers provided for under the governor's executive order in response to the COVID nineteen state of emergency. During the public health emergency, City Hall is closed to the public. The agenda states that the public may view the meeting that is being livestreamed online and on E T V channel twenty-seven and provide comment by submitting an online comment form, which will then be read into the record by staff. The comment form can be accessed by going to our main City of Emeryville website at emeryville dot O R G and clicking on Council Agendas and Videos. Once there, you will see a link entitled Submit an Online Speaker Card. The public also has the option of participating in tonight's meeting via Zoom and may provide public comment during the meeting using the raise your hand feature visible on your screen, or if you're calling in, press star nine. The Zoom call-in information was provided on the posted gen- agenda as well as via e-notification and on social media. And with that, I will turn it over to the clerk to please call the roll.
Councilmember Bowers.
Here.
Councilmember Medina.
Here.
Councilmember Pats.
Here.
Vice Mayor Donahue.
Here.
And Mayor Martinez.
Here.
Thank you. Um, that takes us to approval of the final agenda and, uh, colleagues, with your indulgence, I am going to make the motion. Um, with the exception of item ten point seven, I'd like to move that to action items. Uh, that can be the first action item. Uh, this is because, um, it was brought to my attention that the staff report that goes along with this item did not uh, get posted, so we will entertain a brief, uh, um, staff presentation. Although I'm sure all of us had a lot of fun looking at the map and imagining the tiny parcel that, um, was under discussion. But we'll, we'll get a brief, for the benefit of the public, we'll have a staff presentation. So with that, I will move the agenda, um, with that exception. And do I have a second?
I'll second.
So there's a motion by myself and a second by Member Medina. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Bowers.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Pats.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Donahue.
Aye.
And Mayor Martinez.
Aye, we have no special orders of the day and I'll turn it back to the clerk to see if there are any announcements of commission and committee vacancies.
Just the same announcement that we're currently underway with our annual recruitment for terms that are expiring on June twen- uh, thirtieth. And we are going to push out another news flash this week just to remind people that they have a limited amount of time to still apply. And you'll make those appointments at your meeting on June fifteenth. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, item six, council members, special announcements or reports on meeting attendance. Member Medina?
I attended an East Bay E D A Executive Committee meeting, um, and one thing that we discussed was our legislative agenda for this year. Um, I requested that transportation be elevated, um, in addition to affordable housing, uh, something that can have a great economic impact, especially in terms of creating a more equal recovery. Um, and we had a good robust discussion about that, um, at that committee meeting. Um, I also asked Councilmember Pats to really take one for the team and sub in for me at the Gilman Fields J P A. So I just want to shout out his, uh, sportsmanship there, thank you.
Um, can I ask you a question about East Bay E D A, Member Medina? I'm just wondering if, um, if anyone has had any discussion about what Parklets have done for, um, shopping districts? For instance, uh, on Telegraph, if anyone's come to East Bay to E D A to kind of present the data or, um, the small business owners, um, coming to present, you know, the change in the way business is done? Because that, that strip has changed dramatically and I think that's an important thing to look at.
Of course, I think, um, that has not come up at East Bay E D A. I'm happy to surface this with, um, Stephen Bader. Um, but I'm also happy to reach out to, um, a friend of mine that's on the Telegraph bid. If we're interested in getting a quick update from her, she might be willing to call in and give a couple of comment.
Yeah, oh, that, that's, that would be, that's of interest to me. I can reach out to you offline about that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there any, uh, Member Bowers?
Thank you, just a friendly update that Senate Bill five ninety-one, our sponsored legislation on intergenerational housing passed unanimously out of the Senate Housing Committee last week and is now going to move to the Senate floor where it will need to be voted out by the end of the first partial week of June, which, um, given that that's had no, no votes, um, in the first house, I expect to be a successful endeavor, at which point it will be referred to Rules Committee and begin the process in the Assembly.
Excellent, thank you, Member Bowers. And, um, to this point, there hasn't been any notable opposition to the bill?
No, and in fact, um, the, um, last year, there were some senior housing advocates who had, with the original draft of the old bill, had expressed concern about what they thought was housing that would be taken away from seniors. Um, and we indicated, we actually thought it was incentive to build more senior housing because it would be, it would, people who want to build youth housing would now have a basis to finance this more completely with both sources of money. Um, and in fact, the A A R P of America actually submitted a letter of support, so the likelihood of um, a senior group, um, now opposing the bill is extremely low.
Right, and they get eighty percent of the housing too, right?
Eighty percent of the units, um, are dedicated to seniors, yes.
Yeah, great, thank you so much for your work on that. Um, colleagues, uh, I see a pencil, a pen raised, Member Pats.
Thank you. Um, first, I want to apologize, I, when I moved my office, I did not take into account Evening Sun, which gives you the silhouette of me tonight. And then, uh, in response to Member Medina's comment, uh, I did participate in the Gilman Fields meeting. There is really nothing to report and I will clarify for the rec- record. My next announcement is not, uh, because of that, attending of that meeting. I just want to get that out in the open. Um, I've had the pleasure of living in Emeryville longer than anywhere else I have ever lived. I've been here over eighteen years. And I have worked in special education, uh, for over twenty-five years now, I think it is. And, uh, an opportunity has come up to me to become the Executive Director of the Shasta County Sopa. And it was too good of an opportunity for me to pass on, but it does mean that I will be leaving Emeryville um, in the relative near future. Um, I've been talking to the, uh, city manager and the mayor and we will work out an exit strategy that best benefits the city. Um, but I am truly, truly, uh, saddened. But the pandemic has changed a lot of things and I realize I cannot let an opportunity pass me by just because I love my town. Um, I will be lucky enough to keep my residence here in town. Um, but I will be based out of Shasta County now, so it is with a heavy heart that I say I will be formally stepping down because I think it involves a letter and a few other things, uh, in the very near future. But it has been incredible to live here. It has been even more incredible to be on this council with the rest of you and the wonderful staff. Um, and I, I am, uh, saddened to say it this way. I would have preferred to tell everybody one-on-one, but the, uh, rules do not permit that, so you get to find out in a shocking meeting. But with that, I, uh, will end my announcement, thank you.
Thank you, Member Pats. Um, I'm sorry, it was a comment from couns- my colleagues. I, we're, we're going to miss you so much. Um, you really complete this council and it's, it's, it's been a really incredible time that we've had together. Um, we don't always agree on everything, but this is a very collegial group. And, um, it's rare. From what my understanding of the other local meetings and my attendance of other local meetings. So, um, as, as Member Pat said, um, we'll be working closely with the city manager and I'll, I'll, I'll actually, I'll bring it up in future meeting agenda items. Um, but I'd like to take care of, uh, working out the logistics of this expeditiously. So we will meet as soon as possible as a council to discuss our options going forward to make sure that we, um, don't have a gap, um, in, in our council. So any other comments? Scott?
Councilmember Pats, we're going to miss your zesty personality. Would you consider calling in and interrupting future meetings that we'll be having?
Oh, happily, yes, yes, I will happily call in and interrupt.
I, that pleases me.
Yeah, I, you know, I, uh, in talking to the city manager, I have, uh, both a financial and a, uh, heartfelt interest in Emeryville and do not see myself separating from things. Uh, so I appreciate that, uh, Member Donahue, but I, you, you're, you're rid of me, uh, here, but not from the town.
Member Medina?
I'm shocked and saddened to hear this news, but also resolved to blame this on the Gilman Fields J P A. See, no reason we cannot.
All I have to say is, um, I have a lot of things to think about now, uh, Christian, but, um, wow. Um, but I'm going to never accept an offer to work at the Gilman J P A and cover for, yeah, for Ally anymore. I'm, no, I'm terrified.
It was a lovely meeting.
I'm terrified.
It was a lovely meeting. We did nothing, but it was a lovely meeting.
Yeah, something happened. I'm terrified.
All right, colleagues, let's, let's move the show along. Um, that'll take us to the city manager's report. Um, Christine, is there anything to report this evening?
Following that, nothing, thank you.
Christine's still in shock from this very sorry news. Um, any ex parte communications to report on tonight's evening, colleagues? Okay, seeing none.
All right. Uh, I mentioned it when I asked for the agenda item, but I have talked to Sarah Landon about, uh, uh, one of the, the item that I'm presenting later.
Very good. Uh, Member Bowers?
Yeah, and likewise, I've spoken to the nonprofit Housing Association of Northern California for the item that's ref- that I referenced or referred to this meeting.
Uh, Member Medina?
Uh, I spoke with, um, Laura McCamey and a couple of other members of, um, Bike East Bay about the item that I brought forward.
Okay, very good. That will take us to, um, the consent agenda. And just to, um, follow up on my earlier motion on approval of the agenda, I will move all-
All right, Mayor Martinez? Um, I skipped over the public comment.
I did it again, I'm sorry. Thank you, thank you for bringing that to my attention. It's, it's when I don't see the public, I, I have a problem. This is now the time for public comment. Anyone who wishes to make comments related to items not on the agenda or on the consent agenda should have submitted your online speaker card by now. Three minutes will be allowed for the city clerk to read your comments into the record. If you're participating in tonight's meeting via Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature visible on your screen, or if you're calling in, press star nine. At this time, I will ask the city clerk whether any comments have been received via the online comment card or whether anyone has raised their hands to make audio comments.
I have no online cards submitted and I'm not seeing any raised hands at this time.
And nor do I. And just as a reminder, it's the raise hand feature or star nine if you're calling in, folks. Okay, now bringing us back to the consent items. Um, so I'm, I'm going to move, uh, all of the items save for ten point seven, which is moved, uh, under action items. Uh, do I have a second?
I'll second.
I'll second.
I have a second from Member Medina. And are there any questions about the consent calendar? Brief questions, seeing none, uh, please call the roll.
Councilmember Bowers.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Pats.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Donahue.
Aye.
And Mayor Martinez.
Aye, that passes unanimously. There are no public hearings this eve- evening, so, um, under action items, we'll begin with item ten point seven. This is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Emeryville authorizing the city manager to enter into an easement agreement with Foundry Thirty-One owner, L L C access, and maintain a pedestrian bridge to access the property at thirty-one hundred San Pablo Avenue. And I see our Public Works Director, Mary Grace Houlihan, has joined us.
Good evening, mayor and council members. Um, I am here to present tonight on an item that is, uh, council is considering the granting of a pedestrian bridge easement, uh, for over the property or to, I'm sorry, over the greenway property to serve, uh, the thirty-one hundred San Pablo Avenue property. Um, just to give a little bit of background on this item. Um, the property was originally purchased by L B A in, uh, two thousand and eleven. And the ci- the property is located at the confluence of the three city, uh, areas of Berkeley, Oakland and Emeryville. Um, recognizing this, it appears that in early or mid two thousand thirteen, April of two thousand thirteen, two agreements were executed, one between the three cities of Berkeley, Emeryville and Oakland, and an agreement between, uh, L B A and the city directly. The three-party agreement, the intent was that recognizing this property was impacting all three jurisdictions. They were identifying who would take the lead with respect to building permits for this property and, uh, encroachment permits in public rights of way. The City of Berkeley was identified as the lead agency for building permits for the whole project. And, um, encro- encroachment permits were to be obtained by L B A for the respective rights of way of which there would be improvements. Um, the agreement between the city and L B A went on to discuss the improvements that would specifically be within the greenway area. And those improvements were three-part. There were storm drain improvements to allow for, uh, the filtering of storm water. And there were, uh, undergrounding of public utilities, landscaping. And then there was also discussion of a potential, uh, pedestrian access or bridge that would access the thirty-one hundred San Pablo Avenue property from the greenway. As part of that agreement, the city, uh, agreed to grant a bridge easement should the L B A, uh, enter into a modification of their plan for construction of this pedestrian bridge. Um, L B A did, uh, proceed with that modification. The bridge and the balance of the improvements were permitted through the City of Berkeley for their building permit. And the L B A did also acquire, uh, encroachment permits for construction of improvements in, on city property and in the greenway. The project is completely constructed and, um, L B A has recently entered into and sold the thirty-one hundred San Pablo property to Foundry Thirty-One. Um, as part of that closing, they realized that this final element of the granting of the bridges needed to be completed and the city was approached regarding this. Staff has confirmed that all permitting was completed, uh, per the agreements. And that, um, sorry, that was, all the permitting was in compliance with the applicable city of and City of Emeryville and City of Berkeley ordinances and policies that, um, the encroachment permit conditions and inspections were done in compliance with our permit requirements. And L B A has complied with all applicable city ordinances and policies for the approval and construction of the pedestrian bridge. So at this time and tonight, the, the staff has reviewed the easement documents and is presenting them for your consideration to complete this, uh, requirement of the agreement that the city entered into back in April of two thousand thirteen to grant the pedestrian bridge easement for the benefit of the thirty-one hundred San Pablo Avenue property. So I am happy to try and answer any questions regarding this item.
Thank you, Mary Grace, colleagues. Are there any questions? Member Medina?
Did anyone provide a rendering of the bridge?
Um, we, we have not provided a rendering of the bridge this evening. It is, uh, it is already constructed and physically out in the right of way.
Right, I was, this whole time I was scrolling for a picture of the bridge.
Oh, my apologies, we did not include that in the documents.
There is a, um, if, if you go into Google Maps, you can kind of see a satellite view of, of the bridge.
It's a fairly simple concrete bridge.
If you saw it, you wouldn't call it a bridge?
That's correct. It, it just spans a drainage area, um, from the greenway to the building, so it's, it's rather uneventful.
It is, any other, um, questions, colleagues? Okay, seeing no questions, I'll check in with our city clerk to see if anyone has submitted electronic comment. Um, while she is checking, I will remind viewers that you may raise your hand in Zoom, uh, using the raise hand feature in the application. And if you're calling in on the phone, press star nine to raise your hand and you will be recognized. Sheri, are there any electronic comments submitted?
None at this time.
Okay, thank you, I'll bring it back to my colleagues. Is there any discussion on this item, colleagues?
Make a motion to approve the-
If not, is there a motion on the resolution?
Make a motion to approve the resolution.
I have a motion from Member Bowers, a second from Member Medina. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Bowers.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Pats.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Donahue.
Aye.
And Mayor Martinez.
Aye, and thank you, Mary Grace, for jumping in, uh, with that presentation last minute. Um, that brings us to item twelve point one. This is the budget planning discussion for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two. Uh, Madam City Manager, did you have introductory remarks before we, um, have Brad present?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, we do have a PowerPoint presentation for you tonight, um, that Mr. Farmer, our Finance Director, will go through. Um, he, he will go into detail, but obviously this is a very different budget than this State Council, um, and certainly I have seen in the- Um, and certainly I have seen in the past, given the fiscal constraints resulting from the pandemic. So we were able to present this to the Budget Advisory Committee and the Budget and Governance Committee this past Friday. Uh, benefited from the comments and suggestions from those committees. Um, I will have remarks at the end of this presentation as well, but with that, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Farmer, who will go through the detail. One final comment, this presentation is at a fund level. It is not at a service area or department level. So it's a little bit different than you've seen in the past, but we really wanted to focus for this preliminary presentation on the impact of at our fund level um, from what we're facing with regard to revenues. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Farmer.
One moment while I get the presentation up. It's giving me problems. Please tell me if you can see that correctly.
That looks perfect.
Okay, sorry for the delay.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmembers, um, this evening I want to present the preliminary budget for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two. This as um, City Manager Ms. Daniels said, is going to be based on a fund level and not um, departmental levels. Um, next slide, please.
Mr. Farmer, if you can speak a little bit closer to your microphone, that would be helpful.
Is this any better?
That's an improvement, yeah.
Thank you. Um, if we can go to the next slide, please. Um, slide two, please.
Back one, Sherry. There we go, strategies.
Thank you. Um, so there's a couple of strategies that we wanted to talk about um, in the current budget. And one of them is the single-year budget. Our typical budget cycle is a two-year budget cycle. And given the pandemic and the lack of revenue consistency over the last um, year and a half, we have presented or are going to present a single-year budget this year. And we will also present for the second uh, year, next year, normal two-year budget cycle, a one-year budget, and then be moving back to a two-year budget at the end of two-year cycle that we're currently on. Um, and that allows us to make a little bit better um, financial decisions and see how the recovery of the economy comes. I think that that's going to allow um, us not to make um, drastic measures or difference that may not be necessarily um, in line with what happens as the economy starts to open back up. The um, the other one that we're doing is we'll be using one-time funds again this year to balance out the general fund, and I'll get to that in just a second. And then, as we had mentioned back in January, we'll be taking a focused capital improvements program. So it's basically concentrating on the capital improvement programs. Our projects that have already been approved and are funded as we move forward. You can go to the next slide, please. So use of one-time funds. So in the current budget, we have um, basically these six um, presentations, and so one of them is we're going to be utilizing existing general fund, fund balance of approximately six point four million dollars. Be using two point two million of the federal stimulus money that should be coming out of the relief that's been handled on a federal level. We will be um, continuing as we just recently passed, using Measure F funds to cover the cost of the Emeryville Child Development Center. Be using one million dollars from our one fifteen pension trust, and that's exactly, this is the type of use that the pension trust was actually set up for. It's not only to um, cover rising costs as we move down the road with um, the CalPERS, especially the unfunded liability costs as they may change over time, but to smooth stuff out, so it's a great use for that. Um, we will be maintaining vacancies across multiple departments. Um, in the budget, there are some decisions that are budgeted for, but we'll be maintaining those until the revenues actually um, come in. So that way, we're not utilizing so much fund balance in the end. And then we are going to defer transfers to the litigation fund and extend some useful lives of vehicles, um, specifically on our fire vehicles. That will be able to allow us to move forward. The other one that I forgot to put on this at this point was, we're going to continue in this presentation I am putting forward to maintain the residual property tax reserve allocation that the city's council um, put into place last year, which leaves fifty percent of that coming back to the general fund that will help bridge the gap with current year. We can go to the next slide, please. So as I mentioned on the focused CIP, um, what we're really looking to do is just to work on the projects that have previously been funded, um, which were all priorities set by council and funding was set aside previous years. There will be some additional CIP that will come through tax, uh, gas tax and other revenues that we get. Those will be included in the current years. So the plan is to maintain the currently existing adopted fiscal year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty-four CIP plan. Plan is not to bring any new CIP plan this year, but we will have all of the rollovers incorporated into the budget and the presentation here tonight. We can go to the next slide. So kind of a general overview of the general fund. So on the next few slides, what I've done is I've put in um, the amended budget that was just recently approved for comparison purposes. I wanted to point out that in last year's revenues of forty-one point one million dollars, that included six point three million dollars of one-time funds that were allowed utilized, and that was happened last June. Um, and then for the current year, um, you can see that we're not utilizing as many of those funds. And then with the revenues that I'll go over in a few minutes, you can see that there's still a shortfall of two point eight million dollars for the current year compared to last year. As we see the economy recover, we still have some concerns in various areas, but when I go over the revenues. The expenses, for the most part, are up a little bit. They're up three point six two percent. That's a deviation of about one point five percent. Um, and the expenses that actually increased for the next year are salary and benefits, and the PERS costs are, we care of a lot of those that were already under contract for. So as we previously did, um, there was a use of two million dollars as expected for the current fiscal year general funds, fund balance. As we recall, back in October, there was five million dollars that was approved, and it's coming in better than that. For the current year, we are asking for the ability to utilize an additional six point four million dollars. One of the things I want to point out was that um, in January, we talked about possibility using the economic reserves. This budget does not include using any economic reserves at this point. It actually still maintains a um, fund balance in the general fund of approximately two million dollar. Next slide. So kind of going through the major revenues, um, as I did a few weeks ago when we went through the mid-year, I kind of condensed it down into a couple items. But we can see that our business license is moving a little bit um, over last year. It's about one point eight, nine percent, ninety-five thousand dollars. One of the things I wanted to point out is, if we were to go back and take a look at where we were at for eighteen, nineteen, which is just two fiscal years ago, we were actually at six point four million dollars. So that, while it's starting to recover, we're still one point three million dollars behind where we were just two years ago. Uh, the card room, seeing a little bit of a recovery here. This is really, um, as the current year, the card room was shut down for a whole year. It did open up in April. Fortunately, with the limitations of capacity, really not sure exactly what degree that they're going to turn um, revenue back around on that. Um, once again, kind of for historical purposes, eighteen, nineteen card room pulled in about two point nine million dollars. So we're down about eighty-three percent. I would suspect as the economy continues to recover, that this may change, and that would be something that we would bring back in the or in the mid-year adjustment for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two. Um, departmental revenue, you see that there is a pretty large um, reduction of one point two million dollars. For the most part, that is all about development. So we had some pretty good development this past year. We're expecting some decent development, but the timing of the development is really up to builders. So while I would expect that the department revenue will increase over the year, at this point, we did not want to, in effect, count particularly where they're hashed. Um, we are pretty much projecting a smaller um, departmental revenue of one point two, which is probably one of our largest, it's actually the largest decreases. Um, franchise, we're expecting that to go up a little bit, it's about three percent, fifty-six thousand. And then the grants, you can see that they do increase two point one nine or two point two million. That is actually the federal stimulus money that I talked about a couple of minutes ago, or that one time situation. And then interest income, still being a little conservative on that. Hopefully, as the economy turns around and interest rates start to go a little bit, we'll get a little bit better interest income off of that. At this point, I'm pretty much keeping it flat for the next slide, please.
Um, Brad, if I could remind you to just keep your voice up, please, um,
I'm sorry.
Viewers, thank you.
Next slide, please. So on this slide here, one of the things that we do see is that the market value adjustment for this past year, um, and this is the number from December, where the investments were down three hundred fifty-five thousand dollars. Typically, don't project any kind of a um, either a positive or negative amount with this because our intent is to hold our investments till they mature. So the adjustments um, that happen in market value actually will not happen um, on our books, but this is a requirement of GAAP to record these, so that's why we have an increase there. Um, hopefully, by the end of this year, we've already seen a little bit of recovery on that market value, and that would be down to zero. Um, the rest of the um, items here, the motor vehicle, the others, some pass-through and property taxes, you can see that they're all pretty much flat or a little bit closer to two percent, especially for the property taxes. Um, that's based upon conversations that we've had with the county and based upon history, especially in the transfer of commercial and residential property. The commercial transfer, as I mentioned earlier, we have the program to maintain the fifty percent commercial transfer tax uh, going to the general fund, so that's how it maintains at the three million mark there. Um, the rentals, you'll see that that has increased two hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars the current year. And that is, I'm sorry, in the next year, and that's basically because as things open up, the um, community services department will be able to rent some facilities. We're expecting to see those go up. If we can go to the next slide, please. Um, on sales tax, we are seeing a minor increase here, and this is probably conservative, and I hope it is. Um, but these are based upon the projections that we received from our sales tax um, expert. Another thing that I wanted to point out here is, this is one that while we're seeing a little bit of recovery, we still have to remember that back in eighteen, nineteen, this number was eight point five, six million. So we're still seeing a twenty-two percent reduction over just a year and a half ago, um, year in that closed eighteen, nineteen. The transient occupancy tax, this is the one that is probably the biggest um, kind of punch in the gut for the city as we're not seeing the recovery that we would have hoped to see. Um, for instance, in eighteen, nineteen, our DOT or Transit Occupancy Tax was eight point seven million dollars. Right now, we're still projecting to have about a seventy-eight percent reduction in those funds for the next year. As the economy opens back up and people start to go to conventions and start traveling for leisure, those funds should probably go up, but at this point, we just don't have an ability to know exactly what's going to happen there. Um, and the transfers in, just want to remind you, I mentioned it earlier, in twenty twenty-one, there was six point three million dollars in one-time transfers and the one point five in Measure F. Well, in twenty-one, twenty-two, this is the one point five million dollars in Measure F and one million dollars from the one fifteen plan. And that's where you're seeing a big reduction, because we're not bringing in those additional dollars. And then utility users' tax is basically minor growth, but about one percent there. We can go to the next slide, please. Thank you. So this is the general fund expenditures, and we've talked about these in the past. It's the um, the big thing here is, the increase that we have is, let's talk about, I'm going to step back for a second. One of the things that we asked the departments to do was to take their operational costs where they could and reduce them to start the budget process this year. So you can see under operational cost, there is a reduction there, not quite as much as we'd like to have, but um, we're still doing pretty good because we're able to maintain services. The big increase on this one is going to actually be salaries and benefits, and the big part of that, when I take a look at the detail of it, is we have about three point eight percent of that comes from the tolls that are already negotiated between the unions. And then also, we have a very large chunk, um, there's an increase of five hundred and fifty thousand dollars in our um, CalPERS unfunded actuarial liability increase this year, and we'll talk about that a little bit later overall, but um, one of the things that we have to be very concerned about or we have to monitor is that over the next few years, we're still expecting to see cost of CalPERS increase. Um, for instance, last year, the total cost was four point six, and it's moving up to five point two million this year. It's going to increase again over the next couple of years. Three hundred thousand for the general fund, three hundred and sixty thousand. Then right now, um, there is projections to go up another five percent for the two following years, and then at two percent. Um, as we're all aware, that a lot of interests that is not being made will cost the um, CalPERS fund, in effect, money, because they counted on the interest earnings to make seven percent. They're not currently making that. So I think that those um, long-term CalPERS pension unfunded liabilities are only going to go up. They're going to put additional pressure on the general fund as well as the other funds as we move forward. I'm going to move the next slide, please. Actually, probably should have pulled this up while I was talking about CalPERS. And so if you take a look at the orange um, part here, this is the general fund's unfunded actuarial liability, and you can see that it is going up from two thousand eighteen in just under four million dollars a year for total cost. If you can look at the orange bar, it's the biggest growth that's going to happen over the next four years beyond the next year. Um, I think that this is something that may increase over time. There's rumblings in the CSFMO and the GFOA, which are professional organizations that I am involved with, that the costs are just continuing to go up as benefits increase every year for those who are retired. that the costs are just continuing to go up as benefits increase every year for those who are retired. Um, and the interest, as it's not earning the seven percent right now, they may have to increase or decrease the interest earnings rate, which will only put additional pressure to rise the cost of the annual, um, unfunded actuarial liabilities. The biggest concern I have right now on those is that, as you see, it's starting to flatten out in twenty twenty three through twenty twenty six. While it's still going up, the interest rates are only at five percent each year. And then it goes up to two percent for the fall, the final year here. This is based upon the numbers that CalPERS has presented to every city throughout the state. And I think that these are gonna only move up. If we can go to the next slide. So one of the things I wanted to talk about was the reserves. And this is something that the council has done an excellent job in setting good policies and having these available for use when the time is appropriate. As I mentioned, we are not going to be hitting the economic uncertainty fund at this point. In fact, we're still adding a little bit to it. Um, the earthquake insurance fund, we're still adding a little bit to it. And hopefully, we will not need that at any point in the near future. On the PERS one fifteen set aside plan, this is the money that is set aside to help offset the CalPERS increases that come over time. Um, you can see that we're starting off with thirteen million dollars. We'll be adding three hundred thousand to it from all the funds as a relative salary. And this is where we use the million dollars, you can see the expenses. That's gonna help to offset cost in the general fund. Go to the next slide, please. And so the next few slides, um, I wanna stop here for a second and talk about these. So these are all special revenue funds. The special revenue funds are all funds that have restrictive cash that come in. For instance, gas tax, you can only spend the money on gas tax. Housing, you can only spend it on housing. Childcare on childcare. The next few ones here, um, you're gonna see in some of, some of the cases here, you're gonna see, for instance, in the general plan maintenance, you see four hundred, almost five hundred thousand dollars in revenue um, in the second column there. And then you'll see one point one million dollars that is going out. Um, a lot of that million dollars is actually due to carryover of capital projects that were not completed or not projected to be completed in the current year. So they'll carry over into next year. And so it's not a new allocation so much as it is just a reallocation or bringing the authorized expenses forward. Those were all noted in the CIP plan that was approved from nineteen through twenty four. Go to the next page, please. And so this is a perfect example. For instance, here, you're seeing the traffic impact fees, the second one at the bottom. Um, you've seen a million dollars going out, but only three hundred and sixty two. So those are the expected revenues that we would get next year is about three hundred and sixty two thousand dollars. But the one million dollars there is where we have, um, projects that are on slate. And you can see where that is going to then bring down the ending fund balance. But the whole point of these funds is to utilize them for the projects that they're brought in for. Um, the grants, you can also see that we were expecting to be a little bit under, um, funded in that um, fund this year because a lot of grants are reimbursement based. So at this point, you'll see that we have nine hundred and thirty five thousand expected to, in effect, be borrowing from the general, um, pool of the city in finances. And then we'll get those monies in next year along with the expected outlay of capital that would be associated with receiving those grants. We go to the next page, please. And then on this slide here, once again, these are the special, um, revenue funds like Measure B, Measure BB, Measure D, where they are basically specifically authorized and they have to be utilized for the specific programs involved in them. For instance, B and BB both have paratransit and bike head projects. You can see where, if you take a look at their expenses compared to their revenues, they're exceeding in every case, and that's because of capital that was brought for, once again. Um, Measure F is the quarter of percent sales tax that was approved by voters. This is the first year that we received it. Next year, uh, will be the second year. And so with that, we're projecting a one point five million dollars. That is part of the one point five that I talked about in, um, the first couple of slides that'll be used for the child development center. That's being transferred out to the general fund instead of being paid directly out of Measure F. Because that's kind of how we have to handle it, um, on a financial basis. It has to flow through different funds. The parking program is, um, one that is going to utilize a little bit of funding from existing capital to maintain this. This is a program that was expected to be in full force in the current year and move forward. Um, unfortunately, with the pandemic, everything has been pushed back a little bit. So it's expected to be after next year, should not require subsidy as previously, um, pushed forward when the program started. If we move to the next one, please. And then this final one here, um, we just wanna point out a couple of items on this one. Like IT, for instance, you can see that there's one point four million dollars. That, once again, is capital projects that, um, were previously approved but weren't completed or not expected to be completed. So those funds just carry over. And if, um, the projects get completed, then we're expecting it to fully utilize the one point four million. And should, um, they not be able to be completed, they would be continued to be carried over. And then the final, um, one on the special revenues here is the Property Based Improvement District or PBID, which is utilized to pay for the Emery, um, the Emery go around. So basically, those costs are pretty much in line with expecting to cover revenue, expects to cover the expenses. You can see it went down a little bit this year, um, and, and that's perfectly fine. But that is anticipating that there is a three percent increase in, that will be brought back to council in June for your consideration. But that's how we budgeted this slide. If we can move to capital projects, please. And on the capital projects, we have, um, a few different funds that are utilized to, once again, um, pay for capital. And these are mostly carried forwards. For instance, if you take a look at the RDA one, there is a four million dollar expenditure expected there. But we only have forty thousand dollars, and for the most part, that is, um, interest income is coming out. All of these funds here, for the most part, including the RDA and then the general capital improvements, we'll see that the expenses by far outweigh the revenues that are coming in because those are carried over projects, um, that have been previously approved in this CIP program that are still moving forward and will continue to move forward till they are completed. Next slide, please. And then we move over to the other part of the, um, capital projects. And then, for instance, in the implementation plan, the three point eight million dollars was projected to be spent in the current year. Um, does not look like that will be spent, so it's being pushed out one year. And that also is the same situation for the marina major maintenance and the vehicle replacement. So when you look at it, it shows that it's extremely upside down, but these are all projects that have been previously approved by council. And when I talk about the narrowed focus, we're staying with what was previously approved by council and not moving into adding additional, um, capital projects at least at this point until we know a little bit better how the economy will turn around. Next slide, please. So debt service, um, this is city's debt services, the two thousand thirteen lease debt bonds. And so this is actually refinancing of the original nineteen ninety eight bonds that were used to construct the civic center financing. This should be until May of twenty twenty eight. Revenues will pretty much equal the expenses because the only thing in debt accounted for here is just paying for debt service. Next slide, please. So then we have a bunch of internal service funds. And I wanted just to point out that if we take a look at workers' comp, dental, unemployment and accrued benefits, those are all self-insured funds, which means that as claims come in, the city pays for those claims. So, so what we do is we allocate through payroll across all of the funds to accumulate funds that we feel are going to be necessary to pay for those. Um, at this point, the core workers' comp insurance would also come out of every department and would go into here. And we still have not gotten our final workers' comp, um, numbers for this coming year. But we are expecting to see those go up as we would also expect to see unemployment, um, may go up. Um, it did go up a lot this year, but trying to balance that out because we don't wanna overcharge the departments, um, at the same time. One of the things that you do see is in the past, our accrued benefit insurance is negative fund balance to begin the year. We are correcting that in the current year to bring that back in line with what is actually spent out of there. That has to do with retirees and benefits that are paid them. If we move to the next slide, please. So our sewer, uh, funds here, um, this is the operation of our sewer system throughout the city. Um, one of the things that we have in the second line item, which is sewer rehab and replacement, that includes one point five million dollars in capital that's moving forward. So that's the one point five out of the one point six on the second line. Um, normal maintenance is basically set to cover the cost with revenues, a little bit of additional to collect for future sewer rehab or replacement. Um, so this fund is doing pretty well in that sense. Um, and then as we get the capital moving through that, we will continue to hopefully, um, accrue a little bit extra so that as, um, repairs are needed, there are funds able to take care of those. If we go to the next slide, please. So this is agency funds. In some of these funds here, um, well, first of all, let's talk about the nineteen ninety nine revenue bonds. Um, I believe in the published agenda, this said that two thousand thirteen bonds, that was a mistake on my part. This is actually the nineteen ninety nine revenue bonds. And this is actually the last payment, um, on these bonds, which will be in next year, September. So we'll retire these bonds at that point. And then the other funds that are here are from other assessment districts or reserve bonds that were held for, um, final payment of bonds. And so what will happen is, is when the final payments are made, then those will be made available, um, for additional capital. But it has to be within the geographic location of the district that paid for it. So will we bring in those back to the Budget and Governance Committee as those bonds are paid off so that they can be then repurposed, um, into additional capital with them? Um, you'll notice on the third line there, there is a one thousand dollar expenditure kind of sticks out. That's because the bonds were paid off in the current year. So every year, when a bond is paid off, the next year, you still have to do final arbitrage reports. So there's a little bit of cost there. If we move to the next slide, please. So I wanted to talk a little bit, um, let's pause here for a little bit. So one of the things that we may not have seen in the past is the successor agency. So every January, um, there is, um, a big spreadsheet, we call it the ROBS, and it is the, I actually just, um, it's the obligations of the former, of Emeryville Redevelopment Agency. Um, they're put together and then they're sent over from the successor agency at the city over to the county oversight board. Um, the funds that are dictated or noted here were all approved by our successor agency back in January and then moved to the oversight board for their approval. After their approval, then it goes to the Department of Defense in Sacramento and they scrub the, um, spreadsheet even more, asking for lots of details as far as cash flow, making sure that there are proper, um, disclosures and everything is set according to the dissolution laws. The RDA retirement fund, which is the top one, is where all the property taxes come in. And then we then take those property taxes, which are shown as revenues at fifteen point two, and we show them being spent out. So you can see the top line, the revenues and the expenses are gonna be equal. And if you look at the expenses of fifteen point two, I just wanna point out that those are used for debt service. Um, so if you look at lines two and three, you will see in the revenues, a nine point seven million and a one point three million. Those are the debt services that are expected to occur next year, principal interest. And that is part of the fifteen million point two in expenses for the top line. Um, you have to take it out of the operating line in effect and then transfer to the debt service and then the debt services paid off. One of the other things you'll see here is on lines two and three, there are very large negative, um, fund balances there. And those are because the funds that will be made available will be coming in over time through property taxes to pay those down. Um, this is typical of what you would see with all of the RDA, um, or the successor agencies to the former RDAs throughout the state. And this is actually in the board in really good shape from this standpoint. Um, and then the, at the top, as I said, the fifteen million dollars takes care of the nine point seven and the one point three million dollars. And the balance, which is four point one million dollars, covers a little bit of administrative overhead, but is primarily for legal and legal defense or offense for successor agency and environmental remediation, some of the sites that the former redevelopment agency purchased. And then I'm gonna ask you to move to the next slide, and I believe Christine's gonna be taking.
So before I jump into this, I just have to remark on the last slide, um, I think Mr. Farmer made a Freudian slip with the Department of Defense.
I know.
Finance, it just feels like the Department of Defense.
That's what I was gonna say. I was like, they are the Department of Defense if you want money. So I'm sorry. It, it does feel like you're going up against the Department of, and sometimes.
So thank you, Mr. Farmer. Um, this slide reflects the council's goals that were identified in your January work, your January, January study session. January nineteenth, we presented to you an update on the goals that you had adopted for this fiscal year and you had a discussion about next fiscal year. And in observance of the constraints that we've presented to you a little more graphically, I think, tonight, um, the council chose to focus on completing some major goals that are underway. Um, and those are the first, uh, five bullets on the slide in front of you. Um, just to briefly go over them, as you very well know, the South Bay Front Bridge and Horton Landing Park, well underway, um, hoped for completion in the fall. The Corpseyard remediation, um, we just received approval from the Department of Finance, um, for funding to commence that. So that will commence in July. Fortieth Street redesign, um, we are, uh, the recipient of some grant funds to begin the engineering design of that and hopefully additional funds, um, to get that even further along. The art center, as you know, we've been updating you on that. And then you'll be seeing an item on your agenda, um, at the next meeting, May eighteenth, to authorize, um, uh, putting out for bid, uh, the rail safety quiet zones because funding for that was also just approved by the CTC in March. Great job, Ryan O'Connell, um, on keeping that one moving. And then the last two items are two new items that the council identified in January. One is to develop some revenue generating ballot measures for twenty twenty two. And if nothing else, I hope the presentation that we gave you tonight shows the dire need for having that conversation. Um, staff will be meeting with the Budget and Governance Committee, um, in, in the summertime to really get focused on that. And then the final one is to develop a plan to electrify the city's vehicle fleet. That, uh, goal is consistent, of course, with our, our climate plan and also with our fiscal constraints. Uh, we are looking at this as a way to save funding as well as do better for the climate. So those are the goals that, uh, we are reminding you that you identify. the goals that we are reminding you that you identified in January. They will be incorporated in the budget as well, absent any changes that the council would direct. So the next slide. When we made a presentation to the committees on Friday, one of the requests was that we sort of emphasize some statements I made at the end of that presentation. And what I want to reflect back on is one of the initial slides in this presentation showed you the use of one-time funds. If you added up the various dollars on that slide, the 6.4 in general fund, unassigned fund balance, the 2.2 in the federal stimulus funds, the $1 million from the 115 trust, the additional funding on that slide, you would get to 11.1 million dollars. That's 11.1 million dollars of one-time funds. That means it's not recurring revenue that's coming back. It means it's piggy bank money that we're spending. You also saw that our general fund expenditures total approximately 44.7 million dollars for next fiscal year. What that means is 25% of our general fund expenditures are covered with one-time funds. That's not a sustainable approach. It's a bridging strategy to get us through to the other side of the economic recovery. But in the long term, if that recovery isn't sufficient to pull us to the costs of our expenditures, we need to look at additional revenue streams. And so that is what staff would be working with the Budget and Governance Committee on, is that council goal of revenue measures for 2022. The other thing I want to add, it occurred to me as Mr. Farmer was showing Slide 10, with regard to the pension costs, that orange bar you saw, the unfunded accrued liability must be paid even if other expenses are cut. Those are the costs of accrued years of service for your employees. Those costs continue regardless of your future costs decrease for what we call the normal cost, so new years of service. So it's important to just remember that orange bar as we consider moving forward in terms of what our expenses will be in the future. So with that, next slide, please. We're requesting that you provide some direction on the proposed preliminary budget that we showed you tonight. Our goal is to give you your final budget on June 1st. That will be the budget book with the service area information, the budget narratives, the F to E headcount, all of the other information that would be included. And so again, we're asking for your direction this evening and with the target of presenting you the final budget on June 1st. And Mr. Farmer and I are happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Madam City Manager. Can we minimize that slide? Thank you.
I'm going to try to get you back on the screen here.
Colleagues, do you have any clarifying questions for staff before we go for public comment? No, there are none. At this time, we will open up public comment. You should have had enough time to submit your speaker card by now. I will check in with our city clerk to see if there are any electronic comments in her email box.
There are none at this time.
Okay, and I will remind those viewing at home to use the raise your hand feature if you're using Zoom or if you're joining us on the phone, please press star nine to be recognized. And I'm not seeing any raised hands, so I will go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to council for discussion. Does anyone have any recommendations or staff direction that they'd like to give out or questions? I'll just begin by saying, this is my second time seeing this presentation. There was a lot of work put into this. I want to thank our finance staff and really all of the staff in leadership at the city for tightening their belts and presenting us with options of moving forward where we're able to maintain our city services under difficult circumstances. So there really was an all hands on deck belt tightening to see the numbers that we're at. And I appreciate the city manager emphasizing that the use of one-time funds, it specifically goes against our budget policies as a city. We don't pay for ongoing services with one-time funds, but we are under, again, dire circumstances. So we have found a way to put this together. And with that, I am satisfied with staff's presentation of fund balances and their approach to moving us toward a more detailed budget using this guidance that they presented today. So if anyone else has any comments, Mayor, excuse me, Member Pats.
Yeah, I just want to say that I think one of the reasons that we work so well together is because staff and the city manager in particular has been talking about this with me on my one-to-one meetings for months now. And then when I check in on the work the Budget and Governance Committee does, it mirrors that effort on her part. And I want to take a moment. I want to thank her. I want to thank Brad. I want to thank the whole fiscal team. I want to thank the Budget and Governance Committee because I know you guys really dig down into all this stuff and I appreciate that. Because I know when it comes to me, even when it's this, what's the word I'm looking for, bleak, I know that all avenues have been looked at and thoughtful decisions have been made. And so it makes it when I sit up here and I sit quietly because I feel like I've done the heavy lifting in advance because I know my colleagues have done even heavier lifting. It really does make these really difficult decisions and information sharing so much easier because we are front-loaded all appropriately. So I want to thank everybody for that. Sorry, I know that wasn't much of a comment.
I'm sorry, I was muted, Member Bouters.
Oh, thank you, Madam Mayor. And thank you to Member Pats for his comments. And also want to thank Brad and Peggy and Christine and the Budget Advisory Committee for assisting the mayor and I on the Budget Governance Committee. We've had a lot of meetings about this item. And this is the third budget that I have been part of on the City Council. And I would just note that this was by far the hardest budget to kind of swallow, if you will. But it's the one that the process gave me the most confidence in. And so I want to thank staff and my colleagues for leaning in on this. We have a lot of really good baseline policies in place in Emeryville. This council moved us to a two-year budget cycle, and we are giving that up to do two one-year budgets in order to give ourselves a greater amount of flexibility and responsiveness. This council adopted policies to make additional payments against pension obligations and to also create a 115 section, 115 pension trust. And we are now being able to utilize that to help bridge the divide that we have. This council has adopted policies that prioritize commercial transfer tax money to be used as additional payments on either pensions or the CIP program. And we had, by having that policy in place, had the flexibility to suspend that above the budget amount to give us the flexibility to draw down these one-time funds to be used for this. The council before us had the foresight to pass the transfer tax, and that transfer tax has allowed us to basically generate one-time revenue that will provide us opportunities throughout the course of this pandemic recovery to help sustain the city's services and give us the opportunity, I think, as the city manager noted, to build a bridge. It is not sustainable to do a budget this way. But when you have really prudent fiscal policies, as this council has adopted over the past four to six years collectively, and in part, the policies we've adopted have afforded us that opportunity. We've protected the, you know, the Economic Uncertainty Fund. And we really are trying hard not to be in a position to use that because that really is a safety, that is really a big safety net that's not likely to be replenished quickly or at any time in the immediate near future. And so we really, really looked under every rock and behind every door here to find opportunities to build a budget that was sensible, protected the existing staff services and city services that we provide, and give us an opportunity to extend that lifeline into the next fiscal year with the hope that the economy, which has turned around in many respects, Mr. Farmer's slideshow showed that, we really hope transient occupancy tax, which is kind of the piece missing right now, we really hope that comes back. And I think additional conversations about how to make our city attractive for that type of business as that business comes back will be things that we discuss. But I just want to thank every person on this screen and every person who's not but was part of developing this budget. And I just want to say that I really appreciate the work that was done here because I've worked on a lot of public agency budgets, and this was a very hard one. But it's one that I have a lot of confidence in. And I want to thank everybody for leaning in.
Thank you, Member Bouters. Any other comments from my colleagues? We seem to have consensus that council is satisfied with the direction that staff is moving in. And this is our blessing to move forward with the committees with this budget in this form. So does staff need further direction?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That'll do it.
Great, thank you. Let's get back to my agenda. That'll bring us to item 12.2. This is a consideration of the Commission on Aging recommendation to name a day of service to honor Nora Davis. And folks, do we need a presentation on this? I see Pedro has joined us. Pedro, do you want to just say a few brief words to encapsulate the motion that was made at the Commission on Aging?
Sure. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Yeah, the Commission on Aging held a couple meetings to discuss how to honor Nora Davis and actually involved her daughter. And she went back and talked to her family and provided feedback to the commission. And through that discussion, they came up with trying to honor her on a day of service like the Coastal Cleanup Day. And in honor of Nora Davis would be the recommendation they would want the council to consider. So I'd be happy to answer any other questions or add any additional information.
Are there any questions for my colleagues before I look for public comment? Okay, so now's the time for public comment. You will be afforded three minutes if you're recognized. I'll check in with our clerk to see if anyone has submitted electronic comment.
No comments at this time.
Thank you. And let me just hop over to the attendee screen. I don't see any hands raised. Members of the public, you would use the raise hand feature in Zoom, or you would press star nine if you're calling in. And seeing no hands, we'll close public comment and bring it back to my colleagues for discussion. How are folks feeling about this as a way to commemorate former mayor and council member Nora Davis? Scott?
I feel it's really appropriate. Nora was one of the council members who stepped in to clean up Emeryville from serious corruption. And then she physically cleaned up and made herself seen while she was cleaning up. So I think just everything about it is appropriate.
Thank you, Scott. Ally, did you have your hand raised?
Yeah, I agree with Scott. I think this is a really lovely gesture and a way to memorialize someone who gave so many years of service to our community.
Member Bouters?
I just want to concur. Nora had spent a lot of time on the peninsula, Walking Powell Street and the Marina Park. And she was well reputed for, back when she was a little younger and a little more mobile, for having done a lot of time with a trash bag and a pair of gloves and picking up refuse along the roadway. And I think Scott made a really excellent point, which is when you think about kind of the metaphor for this, you know, she came to the council at a time when industry was dying, pretty much dead in many spaces in Emeryville. And there was so much toxic remediation work to do in the city. It wasn't just picking up trash on the street. I mean, she dealt with the era of the redevelopment agency where so much of the city's work was cleaning up properties in the city to make them, you know, capable of being developed for better urban uses. And so I think the recommendation by the committee, the commission, I think the fact that they contacted her family directly was an excellent, an excellent act on their part. And if no one else has comments, I'd be happy to make a motion, Madam Mayor.
I will accept that motion.
So I'd like to make a motion that, do you have a comment, Member Pats, before I say anything?
I'll just second it when you're ready.
Okay. I'll make a motion to that the city of Emeryville name the Coastal Cleanup Day, which we have in September, our September cleanup event, that we name it the Nora Davis Coastal Action Day.
And I'll second that.
All right. It looks like we have a motion by Member Bouters and a second by Member Pats. And I'll just agree with everything my colleagues have said. I think this is a very apropos way to honor our maybe most active former colleague who was, I've heard tale of her not only cleaning up sidewalks, but on the Caltrans right of way on the off-ramp from the freeway, picking up litter because she just couldn't stand to see it in our town. So and I wholeheartedly agree that her family, they made the recommendation that we named a day of service after her because she was all about service and she was not all about having her name posted around town. And I think this is the best way to honor her. So with that, I will turn it over to our clerk to please call the roll.
Councilmember Bouters?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Donahue?
Aye.
And Mayor Martinez.
Aye. That passes unanimously and will bring us to item 12.3. And this is an item on our Dockless Shared Mobility System Operator Permits. And...
Request to waive presentation. It's technical cleanup.
Okay, is anyone, is everyone fine with waiving presentation on this issue?
Yes.
Looks good. All right, I will, any, no clarifying questions then, I assume, from colleagues? Nope. I will check in with our city clerk to see if anyone has submitted comment on this item.
They have not.
All right. And I don't see any hands raised. I'll remind the public that you would use the raise hand feature in Zoom, or you would press star nine if you're calling in.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Would you like to make a motion to introduce the ordinance by title only?
We will, we will do that first. Thank you. Any discussion, colleagues? Okay, seeing none, I will take a motion to read by title only.
I'll second.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't have anyone make, I will make the motion.
I'll move to read by title only, sorry.
Oh, then I'll second. So we have a motion by Member Medina, a second by myself. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Bouters?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Donahue?
Aye.
And Mayor Martinez.
Aye. That passes unanimously, and I'll turn it over to Madam City Attorney. Please read by title.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Emeryville amending Section 4-13.02 of the Emeryville Municipal Code, Dockless Shared Mobility System Operator Permits and Section 4-13.10 of the Emeryville Municipal Code, system data and reports to modify the permit term and remove reference to a standard. Sequel determination exempt pursuant to sequel guideline 15061B3.
Very good. And now I will entertain a motion on the ordinance.
So...
I have a motion by Member Donahue, and I'll take that as a second for Member Medina. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Bouters?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Donahue?
Aye.
And Mayor Martinez.
Aye. That brings us to item 12.4. This is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Emeryville in support of an inclusive redistricting process for Alameda County in 2021. And I will turn it over to my colleague, Councilmember Pats, if you have any words on this item.
Wave presentation? Oh, wait, no, that's not right. You know, I think we're, I think I'll keep this very short. We're just looking to have a more updated and fair and transparent process. The only thing I want to comment is the County Board has already voted to do it the same way they have in the past, which is very not transparent. And so we're still trying to encourage people to send them letters and...
And so we're still trying to encourage people to send them letters and say, hey, really, go, go, go through, update your process and be more inclusive. So unless there are questions, that's really all I will present on.
Very good. Any clarifying questions from my colleagues? Now, okay, seeing none, I'll check in with our city clerk. Has anyone submitted electronic comments on this item?
No comments.
All right, and members of the public, I'll remind you that you would use the raise hand feature in Zoom or press star nine to be recognized. I'm seeing no raised hands, so I'll bring it back to my colleagues for discussion. And I just have a question for Member Pat. So if they've already voted on this, would we be sending them a copy of our resolution to, or would you, should we be doing this, and would you like a letter generated if we were to pass this resolution?
I think we send them a letter, just encouraging them to, you know, follow through. It's friendlier than a, than a, here's our resolution.
Okay. Very good.
And barring other comments, I'll move approval.
If I could just clarify, Madam Mayor?
So you have a, you have a draft resolution in front of you. Will you be taking action on that, or will you not take action on that and instead direct that a letter be prepared for the mayor's signature?
Do you have a preference, Member Pats? I mean, we could, we could do both and have the resolution just stand as...
I'm going to make a measure that we do both.
Was the motion originally seconded by anyone?
No.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you.
Very good. So we have a motion by Member Pats and a second by Member Bouters to pass the resolution and draft a letter using the resolution as a framework for that letter. Would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Bouters?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Donahue?
Aye.
And Mayor Martinez?
Aye, and that brings us to item 12.5. This is a resolution in support of Assembly Bill 1238 by Assembly Member Ting, the Freedom to Walk Act, and I'll turn this one over to Member Medina.
Thank you so much. So 1238, the Freedom to Walk Act, doesn't make it legal or okay to throw yourself into hazardous situations. It simply removes the fiscal penalty for jaywalking. And the thought of jaywalking as a crime was created by the auto industry in the 1920s to discourage pedestrians from being in what they viewed as the vehicular right-of-way. This was in response to people getting mad about cars killing people. So I disagree with the origins of jaywalking as a crime as a whole, and unfortunately, in practice today, it's often used for pretextual policing, meaning that black Californians are over four times more likely to be cited for jaywalking than white Californians. As we are all painfully aware of, these routine traffic stops can escalate into terrifying and dangerous situations for fellow residents. And so I believe that by supporting a bill that removes jaywalking's criminal penalty, we can support more equitable use of public spaces. And like, let's face it, we have all jaywalked. If you're telling me you have not, I simply do not believe you. We've all jaywalked, some of us are more likely to get in trouble for it than others. The reason people jaywalk is often because pedestrian facilities are simply insufficient. It can be often safer to be further away from a intersection when you cross. There are many parts of California where there are not safe sidewalk facilities, and that further exacerbates that inequality and ramifications of policing for jaywalking. And so I ask all of you to support this. I'd like to add that on Monday, the VPAC unanimously supported our recommendation to, sorry, they voted to support us supporting the bill. So yeah, that is, I'm happy to answer any questions, but I ask your support for this.
Thank you, Member Medina. Are there any clarifying questions for Member Medina? Okay, seeing none, Sherry, are there any electronic submittals or communications on this item?
There are not.
All right, I see one hand raised, so Sherry, if you'll kindly unmute our speaker, you will have three minutes to speak on this item.
Unmute and go ahead.
Hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Do I support this? Primarily because we need to get the police away from the citizens unless they're absolutely needed for emergencies, but for day-to-day interactions, we need to remove the police from the citizens. Not necessarily Emeryville's police specifically at this moment, but police in general has turned into complete dysfunction policing in America, as everyone's aware. It's just fraught with danger, not just for people of color, even for some white people, especially young ones. But, you know, anytime we can remove the police from interacting with the public, unless this, like I said, unless this is emergency, I think we should be doing that, and it's a general rule. I think this is a wise thing to do, and we'll just, we'll figure out how, if jaywalking becomes endemically horrible, we'll figure out some other way to deal with it rather than bringing in men with guns, and, you know, it just, it's a bad combination, and so I support this. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker, and I see no other hands raised. I'll remind people at home that you would use the raise hand feature in Zoom to be recognized, or if you're calling in, press star nine. And I'll just double-check again. Sherry, no, no more communications on this item?
No, there aren't.
Okay, thank you. I'll bring it back to my colleagues for discussion. Member Bouters?
Just want to thank Member Medina for putting this on the agenda. In 2002, when I was unhoused, the last time I was stopped and/or arrested by the police was for jaywalking in a Southern California city, and that was my last time dealing with a law enforcement officer in that capacity. And I would note that in 2005, I was struck by a car as a pedestrian in a crosswalk with a lit hand signal, and the person who ran me over was not cited. So I think it is actually a very salient thing to recommend eliminating the penalties for jaywalking. And I would just note, I can't remember the exact statistic, but at the Alameda County Transportation Commission, we discussed the high injury network, and an alarming number of something like 72% of people who are pedestrians who are hit in Alameda County are hit in crosswalks at intersections. So everything Member Medina has said bears true from the data we have at the county and my personal experience with the issue as well, and so I just want to thank you again for supporting that.
Thank you, Member Bouters. Any other comments, colleagues? Vice Mayor Donahue?
I think that what we're doing is very American, meaning we're, you know, saying that you, as a person, have your rights. And, you know, the, it's true, the moving metal at a high speed is a little intimidating, but we, we have our rights, and other cultures can be even more concerned with this. I was hitchhiking as a young person from London towards Italy, and I got let out in Germany. First thing I heard in Germany was das ist verboten, because I was jaywalking mid-block, no cars around, and it was really upsetting to the, not the police, just to the, the German people did not like seeing misorder. They perceived that as disorder. So what I'm saying is, what they perceive as disorder, we perceive as pedestrian freedom. Okay, that's, that's my comment.
Thank you, Scott. Did you want to respond?
Oh, no, there's no other comments. I was just going to make the motion, but...
Please do.
All right, welcome to the resolution.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
So we have a motion by Member Medina and a second by myself. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Bouters?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Donahue?
Aye.
And Mayor Martinez?
Aye. And that brings us to item 12.6. This is a resolution in support of Assembly Bill 1271, which is also by Assembly Member Phil Ting. Someone, someone should give him a call and let him know that he's getting so much attention tonight in our council electronic chambers. This is on the Surplus Lands Act, and I will turn it over to Councilmember Bouters to present.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Surplus Lands Act, for those who aren't familiar, in short, is a law that exists that requires local agencies to prioritize affordable housing, as well as some other things like parks when disposing of surplus land. It's designed to ensure that land that local public agencies hold isn't just turned over to private developers to be monetized without first giving the public the opportunity to make good on that. It was amended in 2014 to increase and provide additional specificity around the opportunities for affordable housing to help bridge the gap with affordable housing in the state. And since then, as one might suspect or have known, some local agencies, not this one for sure, but some local agencies have attempted to circumvent those additional amendments and to avoid the affordability requirements by, they've basically identified several small loopholes and issues in the language in the law. And so this, this bill has essentially collected all of those, those issues and vagueness issues and put together and packaged them in a way that will clarify the law and hopefully eliminate the loopholes so that cities cannot kind of naggle their way out of making surplus land available for affordable housing with an inclusive requirement. So this is consistent with our city council goals of promoting and establishing affordable housing and making housing accessible to people of all economics means. And so that would be my presentation, and I would just be happy to answer any questions, but I would ask for everyone to support this.
Very good. Are there any clarifying questions for Member Bouters? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, are there any electronic communications on this item?
There are no electronic cards submitted, but I do see one raised hand.
Okay, please unmute the speaker. Speaker, you will have three minutes to speak to this item.
Okay, I support this item. Makes sense. I think you should just vote for it. And I'm sitting here looking at the rest of the, tonight's agenda, and I'm seeing no other, probably no other chance for the public to weigh in on anything. So I just wanted to say, Christian, I'm saddened to see you leave. You know, you, you and I have had our differences on public policy and how it should move forward in Emeryville, but I expect that we would have differences. I see my job as to holding the, the, the local government to account, and that's naturally adversarial, but I don't ever have taken any of it personally. I think you're a fine person. I think you've been overall a good council member, and you're, especially your views on labor have been fantastic, couldn't ask for better. As a matter of fact, I'll extend that to the five council members. All five of your views on labor issues, could not ask for a better city council. Emeryville's top drawer, like arguably best in the nation, our little town. Other issues, you know, development issues, I have problems with you guys. Labor, you guys are solid on, and, and that certainly includes Councilmember Pat. So I'm sad to see you go, and I, and I wish you luck in all your endeavors as you move forward in your life. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Speaker. Seeing no other raised hands, we'll bring it back to my colleagues for discussion. Does anyone want to say any words? If not, I'm happy to entertain a motion.
I'll move, when we do a resolution, will this, does it necessarily include a letter to the committees registering our support? Because a resolution, I don't know, Madam City Manager, if that's our practice?
Do you have a draft letter of support in the packet?
That's in the, the one I gave you? Okay, great.
Once the resolution's been approved.
Thank you. So I would make a motion to approve what's in the packet. Thank you.
And I'll second.
Very good. We have a motion by Member Bouters and a second by Member Pats. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Bouters?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Donahue?
Aye.
And Mayor Martinez?
Aye, and that passes unanimously, and I'll thank Member Bouters for bringing this forward, very much in support. That brings us to Department Head Reports, item 13.1, and we recently had a planning commission meeting on April 22nd. So just, I see Charlie is in the attendees list. Can we get him promoted to a panelist?
We can, and while we're doing that, I will have a public comment to read into the record after he reports on the first item on his list.
Okay, very good. And should I be calling for a public comment on each of, on A, B, and C separately?
I'll let Assistant, the City Attorney weigh in on that.
You could call for comment at one time.
Okay, very good. So we'll, you know what, Sherry, I'll go ahead and call for the comment before the presentation, if that's all right, just open it up. Happy to hear that comment before the presentation.
Okay, and this person also, I believe, emailed this to the council. Dear Honorable Mayor Martinez, please see attached my amended public comment card regarding April 22nd Planning Director's Report to be added to the record. First, thank you to the City of Emeryville for providing this recent Orange County, California transplant with quality of living beyond what I thought possible in the Bay Area. You are leading the path to sustainable earning, urban planning and city management. Second, thank you to Wareham Development for proving, proving my partner, for, I think he means providing my partner in I space in the historic section of the Hollis General Complex, one of the 41 units mentioned in the report. We are simple residents with little weight compared to Wareham's other tenants, yet treated like honored guests by management and appreciate Wareham's stewardship of the people and the land. Unfortunately, due to the installation of parking meters along 62nd Street between Hollis and Overland, in addition to strict enforcement beginning January 2021, quality of life for us and other residents in the building decreased significantly due to lack of parking, a worsening problem with approval of the Emery Station Overland Project. As residents, we support the overall direction of the general plan towards reduced vehicular traffic in favor of multimodal transport to increase safety and reduce vehicle miles traveled. However, as residents without access to the private parking garages nearby, we are in a daily battle to park legally near our home. General Plan 3-25 TP49 states, quality of life and business viability will be promoted by maintaining an adequate supply of parking. With General Plan 3-25 TP56 stating, the city supports shared parking between multiple uses to the extent possible, and will encourage private property owners to share their underutilized off-street parking resources with the general public. My requests to gain access to the Horton Street Garage were denied due to availability, but we ask Wareham to consider allocating spaces to residents impacted by the Emery Station Overland Project. In doing so, we suggest the city reconsider the maximum 319 spaces in the April 22nd, 2021 study session to more align with the proposed 450-space parking garage, given the impact to residents currently struggling with adequate, adequate parking along the 62nd Street side of Hollis General Complex. Thank you, Kenneth J. Carey. And I actually, now that I read all that, I see that Mr. Carey is in the participants, but he did not raise his hand.
Very good. I mean, do see another hand raised at this time. So Sherry, if you would, unmute the caller, and Speaker, you will have three minutes to speak to this item.
Okay, I'm sorry, I left for a moment, so I understand we're on 13.1, is that correct?
Correct, we're on 13.1, and you can cover A, B, or C.
Okay, I would like to talk about A, Emery Station Overland. This is a project for those who are listening or watching, to be developed by Rich Wareham of Wareham Development, right to the north of the, the transit center development that he did. Okay, there is, I have a problem here. This developer has been reckless with putting off, pushing off onto the people of Emeryville problems associated with his developments. It's, I mean, far more than any other developer I am aware of in Emeryville. He doesn't provide enough vendor parking for, for commercial loading and offloading for his vehicles. Those vehicles are constantly blocking our bike lanes. It's just constant, it's been, ever since, especially Emery, what is Emery Station East or West, I believe, it's just, the, the bike lanes on Horton Street are constantly blocked. So, and he, he did that because he didn't want to spend the extra money he would have had to have spent to provide parking for his, his commercial vendors. So I say we have to play hardball with Mr. Robbins, and we have to have, just don't take his word for it. We should take, remove some of his rentable space, probably right out front along the whole length of the building, turn it all into yellow zone by taking away his rentable space. In other words, he's not going to block the bike lanes anymore, and I, I think you guys should be very diligent in protecting our bike lanes from Rich Robbins dumping his problems on us by making as, by how I just described it. So watch this guy. Don't let him make the problem worse. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Speaker. And I do not see any more hands raised, so at this time I'll close public comment on the Department Head Reports, and I will turn it over to Mr. Bryant for his report.
Thank you, Mayor Martinez and members of the city council. This is my monthly report on the Planning Commission's actions. As Mayor Martinez said, their last meeting was on April 22nd. All seven commissioners were present at the meeting, and there were three items on the agenda as listed here on your agenda. All three of them were study sessions. The first was on a proposed research and development building by Wareham Development called Emery Station Overland at the corner of 62nd Street and Overland Avenue. This would be a new 300,000-square-foot building with a separate 495-space parking structure. The commission spent a long time discussing this project. They had a lot of comments on it. And Wareham will be taking those comments into consideration as they further develop the project for future consideration of approval by the commission. The second study session was on a proposed 24-unit apartment building at 1225 65th Street, which would be all two- and three-bedroom, family-friendly units. This project has been around for a long time. The Planning Commission previously reviewed it at study sessions back in 2015. And since that time, the developer has been working on resolving building and fire code issues and finalizing the design. The project was generally well-received by the commission. However, it is still over the allowed floor area ratio. The maximum allowed bonus floor area ratio, it exceeds. And so the developer is going to be working on getting that down before the project comes back to the commission for consideration of approval. Finally, the commission held a study session on our ongoing project to develop objective standards. It, it was late, and the commission had one hour to discuss this. They did feel that it was a, they, they had a good, robust discussion about it, but they felt overall that it was a very broad and complex topic. They felt that they needed more time, and they suggested possibly having a future special meeting to discuss only this topic. I would also note that we will be having a study session with the city council on this topic at your next meeting on May 18th. And finally, I would just like to take this opportunity to say that I am also shocked and saddened to hear of Councilmember Pats's departure. And on behalf of staff, I just want to say that we are going to miss him tremendously. That concludes my report, and I'd be happy to respond to any questions.
Are there any questions from my colleagues or from public in my room?
I do have a question. On, on 13B, the 16, I was on the Planning Commission way back when this was under study session the first time, and they still have the FAR issue, I'm hearing you say. Did, are they still not seeking, like, are they seeking like the minimum setback with the Baker Metal Building? What's the story with that?
Yes, they are seeking a variance for no setback on the West Property Line because the adjacent building, which actually is entitled for redevelopment as a residential building, it, it sits right on the property line as well. So if they were to meet the, the required three-foot setback, it would result in a three-foot space between these two buildings. And the commission seemed favorably disposed to consideration of that variance application.
Is it the same architect as it was in 2015?
It's all, all the same people.
Okay, thank you.
And Charlie, I'm just looking at an overhead satellite picture of 1265. Is it just simply that parcel, or is it combined with any other?
No, it's just, it's just that parcel. Between the Baker Metal Building and Vallejo Street, there are two parcels. And this is the further west of the two. The one that is to the east, that's on the corner of Vallejo and 65th, is a parking lot that is owned by the property owners, a catticorn across the intersection to the northeast.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions or comments, colleagues? Member Pats?
I just want to thank Charlie for his kind words, and I'm going to be here for a while, so you guys can get sick of me in due time, but I do really appreciate the kind words from everybody. Thank you.
All right. So seeing no further comments on this item, that will bring us to future item, agenda item requests from council members, and then just to thread that needle following up on Member Pats's departure. I just would love to have colleagues agree that I can confer with our city manager to put some items on future agendas to make sure that we address Councilmember Pats's replacement in a timely manner. So are folks okay with us working as quickly as possible to, to make that happen? And we have a majority? And there we go. Member Pats is not amenable to this. But we will go ahead and, and put that on the, a future agenda to take care of this, this business. Does anyone else have an item or items that they'd like to present? Member Medina?
Yes. At the request of BPAC, who, who recommended the city council consider this, on Monday, I'd like to ask that we advise consideration of support of AB 122, which is the Safety Stop, more commonly known as the Idaho Stop Act. This bill would legalize bikes treating stop signs as yields.
Support. I just want to say that on my street this week, I saw a caravan of three electric cargo bikes, each but driven by a parent, each carrying two small children on the back. And the parent in front said, because apparently it was their first ride altogether, the parent in front said, "We roll through stop signs and we stop at stoplights. Is everyone good with that?" And they were moving a lot of pounds on their bikes, so it would have been difficult for them to just stop at the two stop signs. So I, I would like to see this come forward for discussion, so thank you for bringing that. Any other future agenda items, colleagues? Member Donahue?
I, I've noted that some other states are approving human composting. The state of Colorado just did, and the state of Washington already has approved it. And this is another approach for us to potentially pay for open space and parklands in our city. We should support the Southern California Assemblywoman, Christina, oh, I can't remember her last name, who is.
Garcia, but what is, what is this bill? What is this? What is human, what is human composting?
That means instead of being buried, which generates some methane gas and problems, or instead of being, your body burned and incinerated, you could be composted, which is environmentally much friendlier, not quite as good as burial at sea, but almost as good. And we could take this human compost, which is soil that is really high-quality soil, and it is being used in the state of Washington to make parks better. And we could have some of our land that is not being used in Emeryville for, that is hard to build on, we could make these into fabulous parks with maybe some kind of name plaques, and the actual, you know, the cellular transformation would be there in the ground. We might have a, a public that would like this, and we can honor past Emeryville people and people who would like to be composted in our soil. It's a win-win-win.
So, and Member Donahue, would you like this referred to Parks and Rec for that, for their discussion before we bring it to the council?
Yes. Well, maybe that's.
If we can also name it People's Park?
There's a whole new level to it.
If I could just ask a clarifying question, Madam Mayor. This is with regard to pending legislation, is that right, Vice Mayor?
Well, it's, it has been proposed in 2020 by, I guess, Christina Garcia, that the state of California approve human composting, like Colorado and Washington. So I think we should offer a letter of support.
Is, is there a pending bill, council member?
Well, I, I'm not sure if it's pending.
Give me one minute, I'm on it. Hold on. Yes. It's Assembly Bill 501.
Well, I suggest.
So Scott, I, I love you, but I am a no vote on this, sorry.
Oh.
I do not think that's, I think that's a public relations nightmare, and she is fantastic on environmental issues, and you are always the most creative thinker that we have here. And I never thought I would say no to something you've suggested, but I don't think we should have a debate about supporting a bill about putting people's remains in public spaces. I don't think that's a good idea. Given the history of the Aloney here in Emeryville, I just feel very sensitive to the, to the fact that there are people who are buried here, and I think composting Emeryville residents and putting them on soil and spaces where there is a sacred burial ground, to me is not something we should discuss, so I'm, I'm out.
Okay, I'd like to take this forward to the Parks and Rec Committee, because I really disagree with Member Bouters. I, I think this is worthy of further discussion.
Member Pats?
Since Ally beat me to the People's Park joke, I need a point of clarification here on this. I'm hearing two separate things to consider. I am hearing the bill to allow for human composting, and then what we do with the compost once it has occurred, once it has converted, that's the word I'm looking for. And I think those are two separate things. From an environmental perspective, well, human composting is a natural sort of thing we should be doing. It's a natural process. As Scott said, it returns things to the soils. So I think we should be encouraging that, and I'm in support of encouraging that. As to the disposition of where we choose to use that compost, I think that is, I think that is a broader or separate conversation, because it would be not individualized at that point. It would be a homogenized compost. And so I think that presents, am I understanding that incorrectly, Member Donahue or Vice Mayor? That's my question.
No, you're, you're understanding that correctly, even though the, you know, the, we could choose how we use the soil that would be made. As, as a city, we could, we could choose that, or we could just merely support that it be allowed in the state of California.
Well, we, as a first step, council could grant Member Donahue, or Vice Mayor Donahue, excuse me, the ability to work with staff to bring forward a letter of support on the bill first. If, if the bill has, is in a place in its process where it looks like it might even go forward. If it, if it's been stalled, then there's not really a point in us doing that. But I'm in favor of giving Scott the latitude to work with city staff to develop a letter that can be brought back to council for us to consider.
Ma'am, may I, I, I probably shouldn't, since I'm not in support of this at all, but could I just ask that those who are in support, consider that this bill is currently at appropriations, where it's on the suspense file? And so the Appropriations Committee in the Assembly will vote to take bills off the suspense file by May 28th. And so there, this may be a moot point if this bill doesn't leave the suspense file. So I would just suggest that before we put staff time on that.
Precisely, and that's why I would.
Okay.
Definitely predicate this on whether or not the bill's moving forward. So are folks okay with that? If, if the bill is somehow miraculously rises up and moves forward, then Scott can work with staff to develop a letter in support. But we shall see which way it goes, and then we can continue that conversation from that point. Is there enough support to do that, folks? Member Medina, sideways? Not sure?
Looks like you've got three.
Yeah, we've got three. All right. So any other future items, colleagues? Okay, seeing none, I should have done this last time around, but it was brought to my attention by my parents, that I should adjourn a meeting in honor of former Vice President Walter Mondale, who's also a former Senator of the United States, because Walter Mondale's office actually worked directly with my parents to grant them asylum in the United States back in the early 70s, when they escaped from the Philippines, from a dictatorship that had imprisoned my father and forced my family to flee under aliases, but which made it so that I could be born in Glendale, California, and serve here as, on council with you folks. So thanks, Vice President Mondale, for that, and we, tonight we adjourn in your honor. Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Good night.